Would you call the robe, please?
Robert Kraus. Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Jerry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is our consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held March 3rd, 2014. Item B is receive and approve the minutes of the special work-study session held February 24th, 2014. Item C is receive and approve the minutes of the special meeting held January 13th, 2014. Item D, receive the minutes of the regular park board meeting held January 7th, 2014 and February 4th, 2014. Item E is accept a roadway and utilisement from Policy, excuse me, Pelly Investments LLC for a four-inch line in Telephone Road. Oh wait, that's Fourth Street and Telephone Road. Okay, item F is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2013, 2014 at the amount of $1,895,158.52. Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any other discussion on these? Everybody get their claims questions answered? Any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider ordinance number 76814, amending Part 5, Chapter 2, Section 5-204 by adding minimum regulations governing residential construction for high wind resistance.
Mayor and council, this item comes from a conversation that was held directly after the May 20th tornado where the mayor asked city staff to look at existing building codes and to make some meaningful changes that would help reduce the loss of property in life in the future. Since that time, staff has put together a committee of Moore home builders, some city council members, and more residents. The committee met four times. They determined that design of a home to withstand winds of up to 135 miles per hour was a realistic goal. At that point, we did ask Dr. Chris Ramsayer and Dr. Lisa Holliday from OU to assist us. And after they went through several rounds of analysis and case studies, they did recommend 14 areas of improvements that we could make to our building code. Those are listed on page 72 for you to review. I'm not going to go over all of them. Actually, on February 18th, Dr. Ramsayer gave a very nice presentation where he went over them each individually in some detail. But basically, these changes are going to be starting with a sturdier garage door, which is where he noted that most of the failures will happen, begin to happen. And it does use continuous sheathing and better connections for roof framing to hold the structure together during an episode of high wind. These changes were discussed at a Moore builders' meeting that we held here in City Hall where we invited all of the Moore home builders to gather and went over the changes, went over the reasons why. In fact, Dr. Ramsayer was there again to answer any specific questions. And there were no major objections raised, and we did have some very good productive discussions amongst the builders and the engineer. It is important to note that if this is approved, homes built to this standard will not withstand a direct hit from a tornado of over 135 miles an hour. This is not intended to be a storm shelter slash house. Residents should still take appropriate tornado cautions at any time there is a tornado warning issued. But what this ordinance does hope to do is to have some new standards that will hopefully reduce the number and severity of tornado-damaged homes in the event that we do have a tornado. It's only an added layer of protection for property in life. It should not be considered the only protection of property in life. Staff understands that there will be a cost associated with these improvements. The engineer has estimated the cost to be around $1,500 to $2,500 per home of increased cost. We did have a home builder that would estimate an increase in your monthly mortgage payment of approximately $20 to $25. We do want to keep our city competitive for the first-time homebuyers. We don't want to lose that market. So staff is investigating a down payment assistance program that would more than make up for the additional cost for qualifying applicants. That would be funded through the CDVG program. And again, we are looking into that. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those at this time. I do know that Dr. Ramsayer is here tonight. We also have several members of the Moore Home Builders Association who are part of the committee.
Okay, thank you. Who wants to go first? I'll have anybody sign it. Dr. Ramsayer, it's nice to have you here again. Appreciate it.
Dr., I have one question for you. How much wind speed do you think a typical home can handle right now? Yes?
Your typical home is designed for a 90 mile an hour, three-second gust, but your garage doors, the first point of failure, is not rated for 90 miles an hour. And there are areas four blocks away from the central tornado zone that show damage to garage doors. And that's the initiating point, which creates the progression of failure. So would I say it would handle 90 miles per hour? Yes, with caveat that you would have damage. You would probably lose the garage door and have some structural damage.
So your expectations are that we can maybe go from a 90 to 90 mile an hour wind to 135 with these new standards? Is that correct?
Correct.
Doctor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I have a question. Was there any study done comparing the damage that we received in the 20th tornado with, when compared with homes that would be built to this new specification? Was there any assessment made as far as how many of the homes that we lost would, could have been saved, or at least in more repairable condition?
The easiest way to answer that is the direct comparison that happened with the Wildflower subdivision in Oklahoma City that had this type of construction, where you had essentially flattened slabs within 70 feet of what we term an EF2, which is substantially intact with just damage to the garage. That was not duplicated anyplace else. Generally, that damage zone is more like three blocks wide from total EF5 slab wiped clean to the edges of the storm. So in 70 feet, you did not lose 100 miles per hour. What you had in Wildflower was essentially better construction that allowed it to stay structurally intact through a much higher wind than it was initially designed for, mostly due to systems effect and the elements that are part of this proposal that you're going to be voting on.
So is your assessment that by doing this, we stand a better chance weathering the storm with less damage and probably less personal injury?
Correct. It will narrow the damage zone. You'll have less structural damage. Instead of 1,400 homes impacted, you would have a much smaller quantity impacted. You'd have less debris being thrown at your neighbors. And there's a study out of South Carolina that I just found last week that suggests that the secondary debris actually poses a significant risk to other buildings. So basically, even a small number of improvements, and this goes to you can't improve all the structures all at once. It's going to take time. But every structure that you put in place that meets the new design code is going to reduce the damage to the neighbor who doesn't have the improved design code. So it slowly reduces quite significantly the amount of damage you're going to have over the entire path of a tornado wind event.
Thank you. Any other? Marvin Hayworth, would you like to say your words? It was Steve's idea.
Marvin Hayworth, and I'm representing the Moore Home Builders Association. And in general, the home builders are accepting this as a good thing. In anything, you have the naysayers. But overall, I think we have a good consensus that this is going to improve the quality of homes in the Moore area. And we basically feel like it's something that needs to be done so that Moore looks like it's addressing the problem that we have with tornadoes. And we know that we're going to have more. This is not the last one. We hoped the 99 one would be the last one, but it wasn't. So now we know, we really know we need to address this. And I think this is a good thing that we're doing. In my assessment of looking at the homes, the garage doors were the big deal. But I understand what Chris says, that when the garage door goes, it's just a matter of minutes until it takes some more of the home with it. Depending on how long the wind's there, how much damage you're going to get, I believe this will be a great step in the right direction.
Mr. Hayworth, do you think it'll keep any builders or any citizens from coming to our city?
No, I don't. I think the fact that we're addressing the issue that we have may make people more comfortable to come to our city, knowing that we're addressing the issue, that we're not trying to ignore it or sidestep it.
Great, thank you.
See if my logic is right in the profession of healthcare. But with these standards, the tornado that we encountered in, I believe it was 2003, the damage that was done in that tornado, if all of the housing was, you know, up to this code and so forth, we would have had very little damage. Now with an EF5, like May 20th, it's not going to have any effect there.
Well, actually, I believe it will have some effect if you have an EF5, because if you're on the fringes of that, the wind speed decreases at some point where it's 135 mile an hour wind. And those homes that have been built to this standard in that zone of the tornado will have a better chance of survival.
Mr. Hayworth, other question, please. Has any discussion been made about the kind of deferring the cost of, the additional cost of making these homes more storm-ready? As far as the insurance is concerned, savings on the insurance? Or is there any conversation along those lines?
We had a little bit of a conversation in the committee, but we really don't have any answers for that particular issue yet. I think it's an issue that will be addressed at some point, and I think we will be able to get some better insurance rates on these homes as we go along. But it's not been addressed at this time.
So Mr. Kavner, Mr. Blair, you're two insurance guys. Do you know, has everybody been talking on this? Are you guys worried?
I wasn't going to throw you guys in.
Are you going to save the citizens the money?
In the long haul, I think it will. You don't just pick up the phone and say, hey, we're going to do some things. We need a discount. It'll take a little more time and study than that. But I think we're almost at a point in Moore, you have companies that no longer want to even insure. Moore as a whole, as well as rates going crazy. I think this will help that area immediately toward where we still have companies that want to come in. Long haul, rates are based upon claims. We have less claims, rates are going to go down. So big picture, yes, got to help our citizens.
I think we'll have more homes in the, after the event, that are still inhabitable that would not have been, had they not been built to this standard. They just wouldn't, wouldn't be able to move right back in. You know, in any tornado, you're going to sustain roof damage. That's to the actual roofing. But to this standard, we may be able to save the decking and be able to put a roof right back on the house and move people back in. So I think, I think it will improve the situation.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you. Thank you.
And I would just, just before we vote, I would just say I'm having opportunity to be a part of the committee that met, the home builders and others. And I'm excited that our council is moving forward with this and doing something to hopefully eliminate some damage and maybe save some lives. It's a positive thing that we're doing. I know that this is, tornadoes have visited here in the past. And there was talk, but nothing really ever happened. So I think it's great that we're doing something to address this matter, this issue.
Well, I think Marvin said it right. For us, in Moore, Oklahoma, for us to do nothing, I think is a mistake. Did we ever think we'd have one after 99? No. Did we think we'd have another after '03? No. Did we think we'd have one after May 20th? No, we had one May 31st. I don't know why. You know? But for us to have you sit here and say, ah, so I don't have any? We can't do that. But another thing, I know we've got some home builders here that may have some questions. Now's the time to get those questions answered. If you guys have questions.
I'm not a builder, but we're building too. We lost a firm.
Could you come up to the microphone, please, ma'am? Give us your name.
I'm Barbara Beatty Johnson. My home was at 205 South Old Bridge Road in Moore. And we're rebuilding right now. And my husband had himself, when he hadn't put the hurricane ties on our house. We had that on our shop in the back, and we didn't lose the shop roof. And I think that's attributed to those hurricane ties, because it took our house, took our neighbors, sucked out their roof, but it left our roof on that shop. But the new codes that you're referring to, when will those come into effect? Because we're building, there's a lot of homes that have started and...
If the ordinance is approved by the city council tonight, it'll go into effect in 30 days. And then any home permit that's issued after that date,
After that date.
Then the ordinance would be in effect for that home. For any existing home that's under construction, it would not.
It would not affect, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I also just... Not to say your builder can't do some of that if they so choose.
We're doing a lot of things ourselves.
It took a little bit of time for this to happen. It would have been great if we could have done it in two weeks, but we wanted to be thorough and complete, make sure we didn't do something that would be detrimental or have adverse effects. So it's taken time, and it's gone through a lot of study and thought. And I believe what we're presenting here is going to be a good thing, and I wouldn't be surprised if other cities adopt what we're doing.
We have a motion. Anybody want to make a second?
I think we had that too.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you made a second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not, call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider resolution number 791-14, adopting the Community Development Law Grant Disaster Recovery CDVG-DR 2013 Action Plan and submitting the same to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Before I get started with describing the action plan, we actually do have a really exciting announcement to make. And I was going to invite Donna Wicks. She is the head of the CDVG program at the OKC head office to come and make that very exciting announcement.
Good evening. I get to talk at the mic tonight. My name is Donna Wicks. I reside here in Oklahoma City. And I am the Community Planning and Development Director for Housing and Urban Development for the state of Oklahoma. And I have been working with all of you since shortly after the storms began over almost a year ago. It's hard to believe, on May 19th in 2013. And it's, we're coming to some major milestones tonight, because one thing we're going to consider approving is our action plan to spend the first allocation of our CDVG-DR funds. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of our U.S. Housing and Urban Development Secretary, Sean Donneth, to announce that we're also going to be including an additional allocation to the city of Moore, and that is an amount of $25.9 million. So in addition to the $26.3 million that we'll be discussing in the action plan tonight, you're going to be given a second allocation of the $25.9 million. In addition, the state of Oklahoma is going to be given an additional allocation of $83.1 million, which brings a total new allocation of $109 million. And when you add the four allocations together, that is $145.9 million to the state of Oklahoma to support not only the storms of last year, but they're also including the fires that we had in 2012 and the other disasters in 2011 and 2013. So when you look about the magnitude of impact, these funds will be able to make across the state, looking at long-term resiliency, so that when you impact it with the building codes that you all just passed, we're going to be able to make a huge difference, you all will, in the state of Oklahoma. And I think that's very exciting. So I applaud you on the vision that you have here, because it will go a long way across the United States of other disasters and other cities that are following in your footsteps as to what you're doing. And it's just been a pleasure to work with all of you. And I'm looking forward to many more years of working with you. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you, Donna. Just as a note, procedural note, the action plan that you guys have reviewed and that's really up for consideration tonight is just for that initial $26.3 million. We will have to come back at a later date to do an amendment to this to include the additional money that HUD has just awarded us. So just to let you know what's going on there.
But when we approve this, and it goes to HUD, and they can approve it, then we can begin to utilize that?
That's correct.
We're not going to have to wait?
No, no, there's no more waiting.
Okay.
There's no more waiting. This has been a long time coming. We've talked about it for a long time. Donna and Jerry Hayden with HUD, Oklahoma City Office, contacted us almost directly after the tornado and began working with city staff on coming up with a long-term recovery plan for our city. We're very happy to work with them. We began this journey, like I said, at the end of May. Our first award is $26.3 million. We call that the first allocation. And in preparing this action plan, we do have to have a lot of citizen input. We had the luxury of being able to have months to prepare an action plan, whereas normally, under the disaster recovery funding, you only have possibly a series of weeks to prepare it. So we had time on our side. We were able to get a lot of citizen input, which we're very proud of. We had two tornado-area visioning meetings. We had two more official public hearings where we collected citizen comments. The action plan was posted for public comments on February 24th. And on March 5th, the CDVG Advisory Committee met. They reviewed the plan. They reviewed the comments that we had received to date. And they recommended that city council approve this plan. The CDVG disaster recovery funding does differ from the CDVG entitlement funding in a couple of ways. Number one, the funding must be used in the tornado area or to address a need that is a direct result of the tornado. The recipients cannot have a duplication of benefits. And this is a very important point to make. Duplication of benefits basically says if you are receiving a monetary settlement or grant for anything that you lost during the tornado, you cannot come back to the CDVG program and request it again. So basically, this is for unmet needs. If your needs are met elsewhere, whether it's through insurance settlement, grants, or any other process, then you would not be able to use the CDVG funds. We also have a very strict timeline to use these funds. Once we have obligated funding, we do have to spend it within two years. Spending $50 million in two years would be virtually impossible. So because of that, HUD has developed a, what would they call, a partial action plan that we can do, where basically, we take the amount of money that we feel comfortable that we can spend in a two-year time period, and we make an action plan for that amount of money. Now, having said that, we are required to have all of these funds obligated by September of 2017. And they must all be spent by September of 2019. So that will be the end of the grant period. The major thing that is the exact same as the CDVG entitlement funding is that they must, all these funds must be used, 51% of the funds, excuse me. The major thing that is the exact same as the, uh, CEBG entitlement funding is that they must, all these funds must, uh, be used, fifty-one percent of the funds, excuse me, must be used to benefit low to moderate income persons. Uh, so that will be something that we have to keep in the back of our minds as we start to develop all the different ways that we can use these funds. Uh, so as I explained before, um, due to the expenditure restrictions that Congress has put on the money, uh, we are presenting you tonight with a, a partial action plan. Um, the budget preparation was guided by the amount of the damage the city received. You will see that the housing program, um, has the lion's share of the money dedicated to it, and that's because, if you look at all of the monetary damage, housing received the highest amount of monetary damage. Uh, the partial budget is intended to get us started for the next eight months. Um, I would refer you to, uh, page seventy-four of your packet, uh, that gives you the overall, um, budget for the twenty-six point three million. Housing is allocated sixteen million, infrastructure three million, resiliency two million forty thousand. Administration, uh, was budgeted one million three hundred fifteen thousand, planning three million nine hundred forty-five thousand. Uh, that all adds up to twenty-six point three million. Uh, now, the partial action plan, which is what we're requesting today, um, can be found on page seventy-five of your packet. Uh, we are requesting, um, one point two million in total. We believe that we can spend this one point two million in, um, approximately eight months. Uh, we can come back with another partial plan, action plan, at any time we feel like we need another, um, drawdown of money. Uh, so we're not restricted in any way as to how many partial action plans we can request. So for this next eight months, uh, we will be spending, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on owner occupied housing. We have been working in close, uh, contact with the city of Oklahoma City and their housing program, but quite frankly, we're a little unsure as to what the demand for the housing program will be. So for the next eight months, what we're proposing is to, um, be offering a, a sign-up for a, a housing rehab program. We really are interested in seeing how many people out there in the world, uh, need this kind of assistance, uh, for them to do a repair on their home and, and get back into their home. Uh, for infrastructure, we are requesting five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we know that many, many infrastructure needs have been identified. Um, I believe that that's why we probably got the second allocation that Donna just announced. Um, but this five hundred thousand dollars is going to allow us to make some really quick repairs and upgrades to infrastructure, particularly around the Plaza Towers Elementary. Um, that is, uh, time sensitive in that we need to get the, the, any improvements we make over there have to be done, um, in accordance with the school schedule. So we want to make sure that we have that money, um, available to us. Uh, but we do want to make sure that everyone is aware that almost every neighborhood, um, we feel at this point will receive infrastructure work, so it, don't, don't get discouraged if you don't live near the Plaza Towers, because I think that everyone will, uh, just about everyone will see, uh, a benefit. Um, administration, we are requesting one hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is primarily for staff salary reimbursement. We als- will also be, uh, implementing an internal auditing system, uh, through a contractor. Uh, this is to keep us out of trouble with the, uh, the, uh, OIG, the...
Inspector General.
Inspector General, thank you, yes. Uh, we, we don't want anybody going to jail, um, or any, um, in, any hints of misappropriation of funds. This is very important to us. Uh, for planning, we have a lot of money, um, dedicated for the next eight months. Um, we have four hundred thousand dollars dedicated. This will be used to do an overall capital improvements plan of the tornado area. This will let us know a prioritized list of all the capital improvements that need to be done, uh, within the tornado area. Uh, we also will be investigating a debris barrier wall, which sounds kind of crazy, but I actually think it's a great idea. It's part of the resiliency program to make sure that we eliminate as much damage as we can from future tor- from future tornadoes. And you'll notice that resiliency for the next eight months is zero. The reason is because we have a wonderful, robust program, uh, funded by the American Red Cross for storm shelters. Uh, we were interested to see how much, uh, interest we received in the storm shelter program, to see, basically, if we needed to add in some more, uh, money to that. Uh, so in the next upcoming years, we'll be looking at the storm shelter program to see, uh, if, if we need to be adding any more money to it. I think that pretty much gives you a very summarized, um, listing of the partial action plan. Uh, again, as I said, the, the CEBG Advisory Committee did recommend approval of this, uh, plan, and if it's approved tonight, uh, Donna is the one who will be reviewing the plan and approving it. She assures us that she will do that in a, in a timely manner, uh, so we can begin to start to expend these funds.
With the, with sixteen million for housing, with that money, any person who was either underinsured or uninsured, after this money is made available, if there are, and there's, I'm sure there's other factors involved in so, but these people should be able to be restored to their original status background.
That's correct, yes, meeting any unmet needs. So between the CDBG program and the O-Drip Red Cross program, that, anyone who needs their home repaired and does not have the resources to do so, should be able to do that. That, that really should not be an excuse.
How, I'm curious, how are we going to let people know that it's available, the funding is available if they have a repair that they need? What are some ways that we can do that?
Uh, well, we're going to use our, our normal means of getting the word out, um, Channel Twenty, the newsletter. Um, we're also going to partner with some of our, uh, media out there to, uh, basically do, um, some sort of, uh, public advertisement program, where we let people know that this is something that they should sign up for, if they're interested.
Ms. Edie, with, uh, the three million that's being allocated for infrastructure going toward neighborhoods, is that just going to help supplement the quarter cent sales tax that we're using for street repair in the neighborhoods?
Well, we can use that as a supplement. Uh, I mean, we, we would, uh, hope to be able to use a good majority of the, these funds, uh, for repairs in the direct areas of the storm, uh, and use those sales tax in the other neighborhoods that didn't have any damage, because we still have plenty of need over there. Uh, but we'll have to work through HUD and make sure that, you know, that meets their guidelines and so forth.
Thank you.
Another thing I was going to say, Dave, um, there, there, we don't know for sure, like Elizabeth said, what the need is out there. And my Robin actually, of course, you know, works for O-Drip, and they're, they've been taking, um, needs requests and applications and all, and have done quite a bit of funding for repairs and renovations and this and that. Um, but we don't know for sure yet what the need is with regard to new home construction. And there's a, there's several nonprofits and people and individuals and groups that are wanting to build homes in these neighborhoods, so we don't know exactly how that's all going to fit, fit in with these funds. These funds may be able to supplement that. Uh, we don't know for sure. We may, and again, with HUD, working through HUD, we may be able to, um, participate to some extent in the disaster recovery project in terms of being a funder to meet certain needs, to where they're doing a lot of the, um, background work and, and all that to verify eligibility and that sort of thing. Um, so the, the housing part of it is, is still yet to be completely fleshed out, but...
But we could actually become kind of the final layer in the recovery project.
We very well could.
I'd make a motion that we approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, and I would like to thank our Congressman Tonko for helping get this money, and for Secretary Donovan especially, who, uh, come up with the idea to send it to us. We appreciate him. He's my new best friend now. And, uh, I'm going to keep him that way, so, looking forward to this. Thank you.
Okay. Item number five is Consider Resolution Number seven nine two fourteen, Adopting the City of Moore Comprehensive Housing Market Analysis.
Mayor Council, uh, we actually have the, uh, the consultant coming down. He, he was scheduled to be here at eleven o'clock this morning, um, but through a series of mishaps that truly are beyond his control, uh, he is still stuck in Dallas for a connecting flight. Was he on the way or...?
He is in flight.
He is in flight, so I thought that maybe we could just move this to the back, and if he comes in enough time, we could catch him on the backside.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody want to make a motion to table this, to move it to the back?
Make a motion to table this item until the very end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please, to table it to the end of the meeting?
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, it's tabled to the end of the meeting at this time. Item number six is Consider, uh, Extending the Temporary Employee Service Contract with First Staffing Group USA Limited to April fourth, two thousand fourteen, with no increase in the rates.
Uh, Mayor Council, we've been using First Staffing for at least the last three years. We're satisfied with their service. Any details that we've ever had, uh, any problems, we've been able to work it out with them. So, uh, our recommendation is to just continue the contract for another year with, uh, First Staffing.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion approved.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the votes?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item number seven is Consider Resolution Number seven nine three fourteen, Urging the Oklahoma Legislature to Approve House Bill One eight seven five, which, uh, corrects an imbalance of the fees charged by the Oklahoma Tax Commission in the collection of municipal sales tax.
I'm just making just a quick comment on this. I was, uh, reading through the documentation. I had a opportunity to visit with OML about it just a little bit, and if this were in place currently, it would generate, uh, uh, estimated about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in additional sales tax that would have been here in the city of Moore. So if I understand it right, this will just lower the percentage that the, uh, Oklahoma Tax Commission takes to, uh, process the collection of taxes from what it is now down to point five percent. So it will be additional sales tax dollars staying here in Moore, and it, they pointed out that, you know, our, our community, Moore, all the, the cities, generate all of our income from sales tax, not any abhorrent taxes. So it's great to be able to keep those sales tax dollars, as much of them as we can, right here in Moore, Oklahoma. So I think it's a good thing we're doing.
A little bit more background on it. Uh, the Municipal League has been working with Oklahoma Tax Commission now on just various issues and concerns to miss two municipalities for a number of years, and one of those things that came out of that was, um, an agreement between OML and the Tax Commission, essentially that, or actually for a number of years, that the, the amount that the Tax Commission has been charging, uh, is in excess of their actual costs. Um, so a negotiated agreement with the Tax Commission and OML, um, is what's contained in this bill. It would lower the, um, retain needs by the Tax Commission from one percent of our collected sales tax, as Mark said, down to a half percent. Uh, so we, cities obviously think this is a good deal, and the Tax Commission, uh, has worked with OML and is supporting this, so this simply encourages and puts in the form of a resolution, the council's intent to ask our legislators to support this bill, so...
And just to FYI, uh, last year, the Oklahoma Tax Commission generated an additional ten million dollars in, uh, sales tax by this over collection. So it'd be great to get that worked along.
Do we have any idea what the status of this bill is at this point?
I don't know what the current status of it is. Um, uh, it was going to be in a, um, joint committee the last I heard. Um...
Did they say anything about it, Mark, at the...
They said it was, uh, everything was moving forward. Uh, both sides of the, uh, up at the Capitol were, were for it. There was some discussion about how the Oklahoma Tax Commission would be able to adjust to the loss of the ten million dollars, but they worked that out. So according to the, uh, those that I spoke with up there, uh, last week, uh, it was all thumbs up, and everybody's giving it a go, so they're looking, there shouldn't be any issues with it, looking forward to it, to it passing soon.
Has this made it out of committee already?
It actually made it out of committee, uh, last legislative session last year, but it didn't get voted on right at the end of session last year, so it was held over. Um, and it, it's been, already been approved by both houses and was in a joint committee to finalize just, I think, just a few minor details, is, is my understanding, so... To my knowledge, there's not any opposition to it. There's not been any indication from OML that, in that regard.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number eight is Consider Resolution Number seven nine four one four, Adopting the Cleveland County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, roughly three years ago, we embarked on a process to update the Hazard Mitigation Plan for the entire county. This is a county-wide process that involves all of the jurisdictions in the county. Uh, little did we know that it would take three years to get it done. However, I'm happy to, uh, tell you tonight that we do have a letter from FEMA that has, uh, approved our plan pending adoption by all of the jurisdictions, and that's what we're here before you receiving for, is to request that you adopt the Cleveland County Hazard Mitigation Plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
None of us understand it, so we're going to ask you, do you approve of it?
Oh, yeah, we, uh, we, we've participated in this. Uh, there were a series of meetings back in, uh, twenty-eleven, uh, and then, uh, that involved, Mr. Edie was there, uh, I think the Fire Department was there. I don't, seems like maybe the police may have been there at least one of the meetings. Since then, our vendor has been working on it. Uh, the emergency managers throughout the county have been working diligently to try and answer all the questions that our vendors had, and, and to come up with the various things that FEMA has asked for. Uh, and, and yes, it, it's a, it's a good plan. It, uh, uh, our vendor is, uh, they are all retired emergency managers, so they, they knew what was required, they thought. FEMA kind of, it's kind of been a moving target, uh, and we went through this, uh, when we did the initial plan, uh, back six years ago. So it, it took several years then to get it approved, so, so, yeah, it, uh, it has a lot of projects in it, and I think it adequately describes the threats to our city.
Did we ever, did we get it taken out where Oklahoma City, if they had one down, wherever, uh, South Oklahoma City starts? Did they blow the sirens throughout the whole deal? Did we ever get that worked out with Oklahoma City? I take that as a no.
The, uh, that, that's actually not part of the plan. In fact, uh, the city of Oklahoma City, uh, they're not included in this plan. They have their own plan, so...
Excited, huh?
So this, this plan includes all the jurisdictions except for the area covered by Oklahoma City. To answer your question, the answer is no.
Well, I knew they were upset with, for trying to include that, so that's why they had opted for their own. Okay, I answered my question. Thanks.
Make a motion that we approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call... would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we recess the City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item nine is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held March 3, 2014. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2013-14 in the amount of $4,020,251.11. Everybody get their claims questions answered? Any notes or changes to it?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number 10 is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held March 3, 2014. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2013-14 in the amount of $176,934.77.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. At this time, we recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
Item 11, item 11 is roll call.
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here. Item 12, the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held February 18, 2014.
Move to approve. Say it.
Questions, comments? Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes. Item passes. At this time, we recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting.
All right, thank you. Item 13 is new business. Set the record reflected all the members that were present before are still present. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. We have no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak? All these people here, nobody wants to speak. Okay. Item B is items from the City Council or trustees.
The Storm Cellar Program, is that moving along well? It's been funded by the Red Cross. Is that, how's that going?
Galen and his folks are involved in reviewing the applications and getting more information here, there, and now. And we had a very good turnout of applications. So, our goal is by the end of the month or first part of April to be able to notify people of their eligibility or not. We do know that there will have to be a lottery or a drawing type of a thing because of the number of that we're going to have available, certainly going to exceed the funding. But that process is, is going along.
And that, the lottery, the, that is being done through the state? Will we do that ourselves?
Yes.
How was, there's? I just had a few phone calls, concerns about that. So, how's that going to happen?
Galen, you want to come up? Basically, if we have 4,000 applications, let's just use round numbers, and there's 500 of them that are in the first phase, the guaranteed ones, which were the homes that were destroyed or the major damage in the tornado area. So, we have 3,500 left. That's going to be another, there's 1,000 units. So, we'll have a drawing and 1,000 of those 3,500 will be.
And how will the drawing?
Okay.
The, as, as the city manager indicated, we are currently working to determine the eligibility of all of the applicants that we've had and separating them into people who were either destroyed or had damage requiring building permits to fix it. That's our group one. Group two is everybody else. When we do that or when we're completed with that, we'll look and see how many of the group ones we have. Assuming that we don't have more than 1,500, we will take care of those. Then, everybody else that's left in group two, we will do a, a random number drawing in-house that will assign a new number to everyone and we'll take as many down as, as we have funding for.
It's not based on first come or whoever applied first. It's going to be?
It will be a random, random selection for everybody that's left.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Any items from the city manager or trust manager?
Just wanted to thank Marvin and the Home Builder Association for your help and, and for your support of this. I think it's a very progressive thing for our communities and for our building communities. So, thank you for that. We're very appreciative of that. We have the monthly financial statement for you to look at. And Jim needs to make one caveat or comment with regard to that on the MPWA side, so you can see why that's that way or understand. The MPWA side shows a significant deficit for February. And it's primarily due to the debt service on the new treatment plant. We are scheduled for twice a year payments. So, the particular month that those hit, it shows a significant deficit. So, it should improve for year end. And as more houses are built back, it will improve. But, but that's the main reason why it looks so bad for the month of February.
Okay.
Just as an FYI for you all, just as a reminder, I think that there's ribbon cutting at 5:00 p.m. tomorrow. If some of you can make that would be great over at FNB Community Bank, their new location right here up the street from us. That's the group that's been very good to us in terms of our interest rates on a couple of our deals lately. And also, the, we've put out a press release that's on the city's website tonight about the ordinance that was passed, as well as Dr. Ramsayer's presentation that you all saw is also on there for anybody that would like to see it. And I also need to thank Dr. Ramsayer also for your work and your team's work and the National Science Foundation with what they did for us that made, made our work much easier, having people who knew what they were talking about, helping us on that. And I do think that, that we are a leader in this regard and that's one to other cities I think will truly follow us in the areas.
I missed a citizen that was signed at James Tommy. Are you still here?
Jared let me know a moment ago that our consultant is on his way here on the highway, whatever. So, we may, we just go ahead and have the executive session if that's okay with you all. And then we'll come back and hopefully he'll be here by then.
Sounds good. Okay. Executive session is item 14. Section 307 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, consider, deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation style Jared and Chelsea Todd versus City of Moore, case number CJ-2011-2103, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the City of Moore as authorized by 25 Oklahoma statutes 307B-4.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Vote. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we are adjourned to executive session.
Mayor and Council, shortly after the tornado, we went out for RFP to do a comprehensive housing market analysis. RKG is, and associates were, was awarded the contract. We've worked with them for the past probably six months or so to get this final housing analysis. And I'd like to introduce Taylor Yule. He's with RKG. He's going to give the final presentation. And afterward, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you. I'm just the council. I'm happy and relieved to be here. It's been an exciting day. I left the house at 3:30 this morning in a blizzard, and now I'm here. So, took a little while to get here. But the important thing is, we are here and we're really pleased to give you the results of findings and recommendations of the housing study. Here's the agenda. The first two things we're going to go through, the demographic and economic. This is information that, that we use. It's background, foundation information. It tells us what's driving the market, housing markets in any, any kind of environment. Is population growing? Is it static? Is it receding? You know, are you adding jobs? Are you losing jobs? What's going on there? I think you know the answer to that. You are growing and you are adding jobs. Then we get into the housing market itself, which is the history. Houses evolved over time. What kind of houses were here some years ago? What kind are being built now? How many are being built a year? We looked at affordability. Affordability tells us if, if the population and the workforce here can afford the housing in Moore and in the area. And then we'll get into conclusions and recommendations. So, I'll go through the demographics fairly quickly. You know Moore is growing. It's growing, it's fairly rapidly, as you can see, since 2000, really rapidly, 35 percent. The county is growing as well, but not as rapidly as Moore. And, and you know, one of the current themes when we were interviewing people was the schools here are very attractive. The school system's very attractive and, and young people who are raising school-aged children want to move here and take advantage of that. And they're also close to employment centers like Oklahoma City and Norman. So, it's, it's right in the middle. It's a great location. The age is fairly young. You look at that big 25 to 44, that's the young working age cohort. They're, they're, they're your largest majority there at age. And then your 45, 64, they're your peak earners. Households by age. The census reports at 15 to 44, but really, I mean, when you think about it, that's more probably 24 to 44, that 10,000 group. But you've got a lot of young householders here. Most of them reside in that 25 to 44 demographic. And then, as you can see, it starts to recede as you go down to 75. You've just got about 1,200 people that age. Incomes. You've got, most of your people fall within the $50,000, $75,000 income range and on either side of that. So, it's, it's fairly stable as far as that goes. You've got over, over 20 percent are within a fairly stable income range and they can afford to buy a home. We don't see any letup on the population growth in the foreseeable future. So, that'll continue to put demand pressure on the housing market. Your median age has been really stable. I mean, it's around 32 from 2000 to 2012. That hasn't changed much. A lot of areas we look at, coastal areas like the Carolinas that are really attracting a lot of retirees, you know, that's gone up a point or two in that same time period. So, your young working age households dominate your market. And the people in the county here, Cleveland County, and that's what we have the data for, are pretty much in terms of income, more prosperous than the, I mean, I'm sorry, people in Moore are more prosperous than the overall county and the state. So, people here, live here, are more prosperous. The economics. In the last 10 years between 2002 and 2011, you added over 3,100 jobs. It was 14.4 percent growth. That's nice steady job growth. The county did all right, but not as well as the city. Oklahoma City, the MSA, was, was lower. And then this workforce investment area, their projection is, is for, and that's a multi-county area, as you're probably aware. I think it says on the bottom, Logan County, Oklahoma, Cleveland Counties. So, they're calling for about another 85,000 jobs and a 16.5 percent growth. And if you look at your growth rate, you can, you can bet that a lot of that will occur here in Moore. We looked at where people work and, and what industries are growing. And from, from 2002 to 2011, you know, you had a lot of growth in retail, but you have a pretty strong construction sector. Manufacturing, you added 300 jobs. That's pretty impressive. Professional scientific and technical services. So, you're not only adding jobs in, in the retail service sectors, which are generally your lower-paying jobs, but you're adding in the higher-paying sectors too, which is good news. That means you've got a diverse economy. Your unemployment rates, yours are in blue, or the counties are in blue, and the nation is in, in red. And you can see that you've stayed consistently under the national unemployment rates in this 10-year period, which is very good. It shows you've got a very stable economy. We looked at inflow-outflow. These numbers, with that 10,729 on the left-hand side shows are the people who commute into Moore to work in jobs in Moore in a, in a given year. The one on the right, the 21,641, those are the people who commute outside of Moore, most of whom are going to Oklahoma City, and some who are going to Norman, and some who are just going to other, other areas, some even as far as Tulsa. And then, just about 3,000 people live and work in Moore. So, that's a sort of an interesting statistic. But you've got sort of a net outmigration. There are more people leaving here to, to go elsewhere to work. So, it's a little bit of a bedroom community, but as the previous slide shows, you do have some jobs, and that's good. And then this is just another way of presenting it. The, the light green circle shows the outflow, the dark green, the inflow, and then the shaded area in the middle are the people who stay put. Community distances. People don't drive very far to go to work. They don't have long commute. So, you've, you've got, under 10 miles is, is over 50 percent. So, people are commuting locally. They can live here. They can be near work. So, they can take advantage of the schools and the other, like, retail amenities and things that Moore has and have a short drive to work. So, it's very attractive. And then 10 to 24, just a little bit further, you're looking at about 37 percent. So, a very, very small group commutes over 25, 25 miles. And here are the destinations. I talked about that before. Oklahoma City, 3,000 stay in Moore, a bunch go to Norman, and then people go to other places. Midwest City, that's probably the Air Force Base. But you can see, that's a fairly sizable group that goes to Tulsa. We also looked at the retail employment dynamics, because that's grown so much in the last 10 or 15 years. And so, we really kind of wanted to concentrate on that and see, see what its dynamics were. And we picked this corridor here. We also looked at the retail employment dynamics, because that's grown so much in the last 10 or 15 years. And so, we really kind of wanted to concentrate on that and see, see what its dynamics were. And we picked this corridor here, and we just sort of drew that out. That's all the commercially-zoned land along 35, which is where most of the retail resides. And when we looked at that, overall, retail, entertainment, hotels and restaurants account for 30% of Moore's place employment. Those are the people who work here. And most of them are located on I-35. And that corridor, if all of Moore is 30%, that corridor is 60%, so that's where your concentration is. And there's 3,000 jobs there, just over 3,000. And really, only 16% of the workers who work in that area live in Moore and commute locally. So, that's a, that's a group that may not have the housing opportunities here that others have. People will continue to be attracted to the Oklahoma City metropolitan area. We already talked about the unemployment rates are consistently lower, so that's very attractive for people who are seeking to relocate. And as I said, most of your working population outcommutes. So, let's get into housing. At the outset of the project, we decided to divide the city into five areas. And they're basically, the areas were chosen basically the sequence that Moore grew. So, one, as you can see on the left-hand side, just by the gray shading, is very highly developed. And it was one of the first areas to develop in Moore. Number two is your, is your old downtown. Number three is where the development started to move east over the years. Number four, and as you drive through these areas, which we did, you can see they're newer, the houses get bigger. They've got, you know, more amenities, more garages, and things of that nature. And then, five is where a lot of your development potential is. It's, you can see again, the gray shaded areas are where the streets are, but you can see there's still a lot of open space there. What we did was, we looked at housing types in Moore. 87% of the housing here is single-family detached. 9% is multifamily apartments, really apartments and duplexes, or no condos to speak of. Oh, I'm sorry, duplex has its own category, so those are apartments. And then, a very small percentage of mobile homes. There's about 16,000 housing units here in 2000, you can see you added 6,000 since then to 2012. Now, 69% of those are owner-occupied, 26% are renter-occupied. That's actually below the national average, and national average is probably around 32% renter-occupied. So, more people here own homes, own their own homes than they do nationwide. 1,800 of those rentals are apartments, and we estimated that 3,100 of those rentals are detached homes in neighborhoods where, and we'll get to that, but there's a, certain neighborhoods have a concentration of rentals. You can see there was a huge building boom here in the 70s, like, 5,600 homes were built. There was a school dynamic that was going on in that decade, based on what people told me. And that really made it attractive to come here and live. But then, in the 80s, it subsided a little bit, but that's still pretty robust. Then it sort of declined a little bit in the 90s, and you can see it coming back. I mean, to 2000, 2004, just that five-year period, I mean, look at your growth. So, you're going to be back up around 70s rates here this decade, if things continue along. Occupied units by year moved into, the blue is owner-occupied, the red is renter-occupied. And you can see that the rental units, in terms of popularity, really started to one in the 90s. And have taken off, but it's a fairly new phenomenon here, I mean, most of the homes were owner-occupied up until 20 years ago. Look at sales activity, you've got, most of your homes are in the 100,000 to $150,000 range, it makes it very affordable. But you've got a nice, healthy group in the $150,000 to $250,000 range. 75 to 100 is even more affordable for your workforce people and so forth. So, but you've got, I would say, a very healthy, nice cohort of homes within the 100,000 to $250,000 range. Square feet, most of the homes being sold in the last three years fell into about the 1,500 square foot, I'm sorry, the 1,500 to 2,000 square foot range. That's, that seems to be the most popular size of home now. 1,000, 1,500 came in second, so this kind of shows you what the trends are. And, you know, if you're a builder, you'd be interested in this. But I think that, in terms of single-family homes, you're not going to see construction go back to the 1,000, 1,500 range. Things are going to pretty much probably stay above 1,500 and even maybe 2,000. That just seems to be where the trend is going, and your inventory of the smaller-area homes is probably adequate. And we just took a, sort of a snapshot, look at what, you know, what do these homes in these price ranges look like? And so, you can see the one on the lower right-hand side, that's $65,000, it's ramble, it's got a carport, probably a one- or two-bedroom, I think it says. Two-bedroom, you know, two-bedroom, one bath. And then, we go up in value, that's, that's a lot of home there for $89,000, if you're from my area. And then, on up to your 350,000 range there, that probably has three-car garage. But, and then, again, I think for that price, that's a lot of home. But that's, you can see the homes, the 199, the one in the middle, top middle, that's kind of what you're trending towards, that's getting very popular now. Then we looked at apartments. You've got older apartments, and you've got newer apartments, you've got some apartments on the drawing board. This, this one on the right-hand side here, this probably has nothing near the amenities, this is the greens, that's got swimming pool, it's got a golf course nearby. This one, south wind, it's the same thing. These three up here probably don't have amenities, the rents are less. But I think the trend you're going to see is, anything that's developed from here on out, the people who are moving into these want the amenities. And when we interviewed folks, you know, they were talking about what their children want. And their children don't want to move to a single-family home in a neighborhood, and they don't want to move into an old apartment. They like the security of this type of deal, and they like the amenities, and they like a place that's well-maintained and well-kept up. And so, I think there will be a demand for that. Age restricted housing, we looked at this group too, we toured some. And again, this is, this is a really small representation, and we see this is another market that there's some latent demand for. And sure enough, when we were looking at pipeline development, you've got people, developers, who are responding to the market. And same with apartments, and I'll show you a little more detail on that later. So, I think the developers, I mean, they're the best bellwether for really where the market's heading. They're going to risk their money, if they're going to put their money into it, then that's telling you that's, there's, there's real demand there. We looked at nursing homes. And nursing homes is an important housing sector, because you don't want to be very far away from your aging relatives. So, it's really important to have them close by, because they, you know, people want to visit them on a daily or semi-daily basis. And that's a fairly small number, but you did lose the bets that they had at Southwest Medical Center when the storm came. We looked at values, was one of the things we did, we just wanted to sort of look at the neighborhoods, and these are per-square-foot values. And what this tells us is, is, you know, where the older neighborhoods are, where the houses are of lesser value. And you can see these newer areas, the lighter green, the houses are more per-square foot. But this kind of gives us an idea of more of a clear indication, the characteristics of the neighborhoods. We looked at renter-occupied detached housing, and we did a sort of a known mini-analysis on that. And these darker blue areas are higher concentrations, higher percentages of renter-occupied detached housing. Now, if you look at the advertised rents here, and this is something we'd like to point out, because, because there could be, if there's a whole lot of properties being rented in one neighborhood, it could lead to decline. You've got absentee ownership, renters aren't as inclined to keep the properties up as a living owner would. But the rents, generally, that we saw are apartments, sort of starting at the high end of apartments, and they go way up. So, it looks like, for the time being, this is very stable. One of our recommendations is, it's probably something you want to keep an eye on, of these darker neighborhoods, and inventory of them from time to time. And just sort of get a sense of how the neighborhoods are being kept up. And if there is any issues to address. We looked at pipeline residential development, you've got the blue, which I think are, those are under-development, it says, or approved. The green, I think we've, we've said they were in sort of the discussion stage, but they're moving through the process. But basically, what you've got in this development pipeline is 721 singles, 110 duplexes, and here comes your next big chunk of apartments. And I think the greens, if I'm not mistaken, that was done in 2004. So, it's going to be some 10 years, since you've had any sort of significant apartment construction here. And then, it's good to see that you've got 66 seniors on the drawing board, because I think that's a demand that you want to meet. And the people I spoke to who live in these, these complexes really enjoy it, and a lot of them are still working people. We were asked to look at the tornado damage, and what we, we looked at is, how quickly are permits being issued for rebuilds and remodels? And we also looked at, you know, just the conventional permits for just new builds outside of tornado quarter. And what we found is, is that people are getting permits fairly quickly. 342 have been issued for rebuilds, and I think that number's probably going up, that's a couple months old now. And remodels, but, you know, basically, I mean, just talking to people, they, they really haven't been scared off, so to speak. It really has not seemed to affected the demand. Now, maybe you need more time to tell. But at least, from what we can see, people here are very resilient. What we call vacant and underutilized properties. These are, these are properties, those sort of violet-covered areas, those are pretty much open space. And what we did is a holding capacity analysis, we looked at the potential for development to residential, and just how long that might take over the years. You've got a finite, you know, you've got 22-point-something square miles here, it's a very, very small land area. And it's a very popular area to build houses and live, and it's going to build out quickly. So, I mean, I think one of the important elements to this housing study is, is since you've got a limited amount of land to build, you really, I think, really have to plan and figure out what it is you want to go there, and how you fulfill these various needs. So, we started out by looking at this, and you've added 6,000 units to 2,000. Your rental demand is increasing, newer homes are larger, lots are larger. You've got that sales activity range we talked about, but you've got people moving into this higher range here. You've still got a very high incidence rentals of single-family homes, but the rents seem to be high enough to keep it fairly stable. But you have these high concentrations, and your capacity for more in development is limited and finite. So, and since they've moved to larger lots, they're going to consume the land faster than they did historically. We looked at affordability. You know, do you, I mean, anytime you do a housing study, one of the things you want to find out is, is, is the housing here affordable? Do we have a lack of affordable housing, do we need to build workforce housing, what's going on here? And what we found is, I mean, the, the short answer is, you do not have a housing affordability problem. You have plenty of affordable housing. The Housing Urban Development HUD, you know, they have these classifications, we use them, it's the federal government. And you've got, look at this, I mean, you've got over 10,000 surplus homes in these categories, these HUD categories. And that's, AMI means area median income. And then, when you get to these areas, we show that you have a deficit. So, so, you know, you've definitely got an inventory that people could buy up to. And this is conventional mortgage, this is where you need 20% down. If you do an FHA mortgage, where you need 3.5% down, but, you know, you're going to have higher payments, so the qualification criteria are going to be a little bit more stringent. You still, you still have these surpluses here, and these very low-income and low-income. So, the bottom line is, is you do not have an affordability housing problem, you really don't need to build any more of that inventory. What you have is adequate, in our estimation. So, conclusion, what's going on in the, in the housing market, while you're, again, you're sort of creeping up to that 250,000 to 300,000 range, and nothing wrong with that. School districts like it, because they can get more tax revenue. The local responders are responding to pent-up apartment demand, and I think the products you're going to see are going to be very nice. Senior housing, same way, as I said, I think you need to keep your eye on these high concentrations of single-family rentals. And based on what we've seen quantitatively and qualitatively, that the recent tornado events have not really adversely affected housing demand in Moore. So, just a few recommendations, you know, there are not a lot of issues here. You don't have an affordability issue, and that's usually the big one. You don't have a, a sort of a declining neighborhood issue, but you, I think it's something you need to keep an eye on. But it's not a big problem, but it's, it's one of those things that if you don't watch it, it, you know, it might take off on you. So, I think, go ahead and support and encourage higher-end housing, I think that's where the market wants to go, and you've got enough of affordable. And then, look at these high-renter-occupied, single-family neighborhoods, it's probably not a bad idea for, for the stakeholders to go in and really assess these neighborhoods, and see what kind of condition they really are in. I mean, that's a sort of a task in and of itself, but one that we would highly recommend. Support and encourage higher-density housing options for both young professionals and empty nesters. More apartments, maybe, I mean, a couple of the builders we talked to, there's no condo market here in Moore, there's one in Oklahoma City, but they're considering condos. Now, you know, it might be sort of risky, because it's sort of an untried market, but I think certainly apartments will continue to be in demand. One of the things we were asked, coming into the study, was, you know, this commuter transit, this commuter rail, and the possibility for transit-oriented development. When we say pre-plan, look at the opportunity sites that might be next to the transit station itself, and what the possibilities are for redevelopment or development of empty sites. And when we say plan ahead, you know, think about doing a master plan, and what kind of density you want there, and really what you want to see there, and have that conversation. Because you really only get one good shot at that. And it's really an opportunity to do a nice mixed-use development, and have a, you know, really, I mean, is the station going to go here near the downtown? Is that most likely? And really, you start to define your downtown more, and you can build that up and really give it an identity. So, it's, it is a lot of great opportunities with transit-oriented development. The other thing that we noticed that's happening is, there's been a lot of retail development here, and you go into any market, any environment, anywhere, when you build new, the old starts to become less popular and more vacant. And the opportunity arises for maybe either repositioning that or redeveloping that. So, I think what you want to do is, is keep on the lookout for these types of shopping centers, the old strip centers that are off the beaten path. And those are another great opportunity for mixed-use development, we've seen it done in a lot of different places. And when you have demand for housing like this, and you've lost your tenants, you know, it's a great alternative for redevelopment of that area. So, that concludes the formal part, I hope I kept under 20 minutes. And so, I'll ready to take your questions, and give you some answers.
Okay, I have one. You said over on the, on, basically, it's on the north side of town, we have a lot of renter properties, and you said several times, keep an eye on it, what are we supposed to do about it?
Well, it's, it's a good question, I mean, you know, you can enforce building codes. And these are, you really have to go through them carefully. And, and basically, enforce building codes is just the one thing that you can do in the immediate future. We've seen areas that dealt with that, basically, tax foreclosures, you know, if, if the neighborhood is in that much decline. We don't think you're there yet. But when you see high incidences of rentals, in, you know, like, 50% in a given neighborhood, there's always that chance that they can sort of start to- neighborhood, there's always that chance that they can sort of start to go in that direction, where if you have not got the homeowners living there, there's less of a desire and less of a tendency to maintain the property the way it should be maintained. You can organize the people in the neighborhood. There's not much they can do if there's no homeowners association, but it's just, I think, just creating awareness is the first step. And then, again, just enforcing the building codes. Beyond that, I think it's really subject to discussion and its own strategy at that point.
Okay. And you know where, just a thought that I had, actually, had gone to parts of Worth Two last week, drove around, took a bunch of photographs, and I'm just going to share them later. But I think it would just be doing some of the code enforcement, and just some of the things that I have observed, cars parked in the front yard. I understand people may do that on occasion, but there's too much of that where they, you can see the ruts in the yard, they just do that. Or vehicles that are broke down, expired tags, flat tires, that they're not operable. And it's been my understanding that a lot of what we do is more complaint-driven from code enforcement, when citizens call and complain, and we may be a little bit more aggressive in some of those communities by going out and looking for some of those areas that are beginning to show, you know, that are older and that are struggling. But there's some things that I think we can do to make sure they're taking care of their property, and just continuing with our street infrastructure, and taking, rebuilding those streets, and resurfacing them, and doing, the city doing their part to make the neighborhoods look nice.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you all engaging us for this project.
Good information. Item 15 is adjourned.
So, move.
Second. And motion is second, and you talk to the rest.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Paul Singer.
Yes.
Jared Gavitt.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Powell.
Yes.
William Lewis.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming. Thanks.